I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everybody please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
If anyone would just remain standing for just one minute. Denise Quinn can be here tonight. Her mother passed away last week. And I'd like to just have a moment of silence for Charlotte Carroll, who's Denise's mother. Thank you very much. Since Denise is not here, I can take roll call. So I'll take, call the roll. Councilor Agman?
Here.
Councilor Callahan?
Present.
Councilor Boncorrie here. Councilor Delvento?
Yep.
Councilor Rowan is not here. Councilor Yashy?
Yeah.
And Councilor Terry?
Yeah.
Vice President?
Here.
And Councilor President here. So we're all here. We've all received minutes from the meeting, the last meeting. We just received them. I hope everybody's had a chance to see them. I don't know if there's any questions or...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But abstain.
One abstain.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Okay. The first item under the meeting tonight is a public hearing on the Center Business District Master Plan. And this is really going to work in progress. We've, I think we've been working on this almost for a year, probably more than a year. And the town was involved in that in the beginning and hired some consultants to help us in that process. We created an Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee that was instrumental in helping develop this and getting us to this point. We've had a ton of input. We've had visioning sessions throughout the community of many different meetings, I think three of them we had. So we're here tonight to hear a presentation from Mike Wang and Amanda, I think, to discuss, to show us just the highlights technically of the master plan. It's a 256-page document, so we could be here all night, but hopefully not, no. But we thought it would be good for you folks to give us an overview of what's in the master plan, maybe a little bit about the process. And then later on after we have that, we'll open this up to the community. We have members of the Economic Development Committee here. We have members of the planning board. David Stachiel is here.
Transportation.
Yep. Transportation, Julia.
Yep.
So we have lots of representation from many of the folks who are involved in this process. And so what we want to do is hear a presentation from you folks about that, I think, and then we'll open it up to discussion and to publish. And then we'll close the public meeting, the public hearing of, I have to, I should probably bang the hammer and open this thing first. But we'll then later in the meeting take a vote on that. We'll hear a motion to approve the master plan. So I'll open up the public hearing and ask Michael, would you care to begin with? Amanda?
Sure. On behalf of us, my name is Amanda Beyer and I am with Mass Development and we helped to manage this whole process over the past year in conjunction with our consultants Forman Place and MIPC. So I just wanted to say thank you before diving into the plan tonight for all the support that we had from the town council over the past year and the town manager's office and of course all of the input from the community, but really a special thanks to the EDCAC for all of your thoughts and comments that really helped to get the plan in the final position it's in today. Let's go over it.
Great, thank you. So again, Michael Wang, Forman Place, and I'd like to add my thanks. I've very much enjoyed collaborating with Mass Development and MIPC and all the folks from the town. It's been a great process and I really enjoyed getting to know a lot about our town, so that will spread the good word.
Good.
So I've got really just about a dozen slides just to give a very brief overview of the final report and all the processes and conclusions that we have. So I will breeze through these. You know, it was a lot of talk about the Collins Report and, you know, the picture that it was painting. But I think, you know, through this process, clearly there was a great deal of focus on the, all of the assets that are in the CBD and adjacent to it. And you can see a number of them called out here. And clearly the opportunity presented by the middle school site is a tremendous opportunity for revitalizing the French Square area. So here's just a brief overview of the process. And as you pointed out, Bob, it was about a year-long process. Initial meetings at the town manager's office starting in March of 2016 and then the appointing of the EDCAC. And then a series of three community meetings that were started in May and finished in November. And then the consolidation of all the good thoughts and the final production of the master plan report last month, a year from the date we started. You know, through the analysis process that, in the early stages, I think there were some key findings that are worth pointing out. Some of the things we discovered, you know, the block structure in the CBD, obviously providing some challenges to development in terms of parcel size, geometries, the widths of some of the blocks, which, you know, suggests that some land sandwiched down the road would be a worthwhile thing to consider. The streetscapes, pedestrian environments have some qualities to them. They're narrow, which is, can be a great thing, but I think one of the most notable aspects of them is the sort of lack of continuity of the sidewalks and streetscapes to all the curb cuts that you find in the CBD from a lot of the uses that are auto-centric. And I think we just sort of in general felt, you know, the revitalization of the streetscapes and putting some effort towards creating a usable public open space, particularly in the core, would be a marvelous thing. And, you know, with the new zoning that went into place that the NIPC put forward in 2014, there's a lot of opportunity for more density. Still, I think we find largely one- and two-story buildings in the CBD and there could certainly be more consistency and continuity in the storefronts, particularly at the ground level and what that would contribute to the pedestrian experience. The MIPC did a study, Parking and Connectivity Study, that's included in the report, concluding that there is adequate supply of parking spaces for the current demand. And obviously that should be continuously monitored as development moves forward. As far as the middle school feasibility study, I think, again, that really underlined the opportunity for that to be a catalyzing project for economic development in the CBD. I think it also revealed that there are some challenges and costs to the pure adaptive reuse of those existing buildings. And some of the schemes that we looked at for the middle school, you know, there was a whole range of integrating some of these existing buildings all the way to completely raising the site. I think you're familiar with the master plan recommendations and essentially they fall into two categories. As I've mentioned, the enhancements of the public realm and then ideas about increasing density, residential density, as well as mixed use, which that should sponsor. These are the three of the sort of primary focus areas that we did a series of case studies to illustrate some of the, you know, execution of the master plan recommendations. And I'm just going to quickly refresh your memory on a couple of these. You know, we had a three-phased approach to ideas about how to rethink French Square. This is the sort of the third phase, if you will, that has the largest of the public spaces with opportunities for flexible use. I think we also were imagining a rethinking of the sidewalks and opportunities for outdoor dining and of course the storefronts and whatnot being an integral part of that, but opportunities to connect to Somerset Avenue and lots of things that this put forward. And here was the sort of vision of what that space could look like with the active storefronts and whatnot. So that was one piece of the equation from our perspective. And this was one of the three studies, I guess, well, actually four if you count reusing the existing condition for the middle school site. Again, this one had the gymnasium still in place, but was putting forward the idea of a mixed-use building with, I think it was 60, a residential above some ground floor, you know, perhaps retail community spaces. But the thing that I personally loved about this scheme was the idea of sort of connecting open space, perhaps an amphitheater of some sort, you know, really making that link between Ingleside Park and the CBD. And also, as you see in this rendering, some thought given to what the quality of the streetscape along Pauline Street could be, which obviously is a very important front door to the CBD. As shown here, coming down Wallen, you know, what you confront, you see in the upper right-hand corner, and this was a site that we studied as early as 2015 on a preliminary study we did with the city. And I think the idea of first impressions, creating a gateway, but maintaining visual corridor and really thinking about the opportunities for pedestrian experience on Hagman and other places, this was a critical site for the CBD. But again, really important to emphasize that these concepts, they sort of represent a framework of ideas and density, height, open space, all those things that really should be thought of as being able to be applied to any site. And I think as things evolve, hopefully with the middle school and around French Square, you know, the logical evolution of other sites will follow. So a last slide, just sort of recapping implementation, the next steps, hopefully the adoption of the master plan and then, you know, a concentration on organizational structure in order to help prioritize and provide oversight for projects. You know, as far as the middle school site, clarifying the community's goals for that and making sure that zoning act is in place for that, to realize those goals. And a strategy for how to, you know, create public-private partnerships for the disposition of that property. But, you know, hand in hand with that, I think, again, that the public realm improvements are critically important, the idea of pursuing complete streets and, you know, continuing to upgrade the infrastructure, which I know is in the works now, the studies and whatnot, all those things and working towards putting in place the relevant funding strategies for Mass Works and other things, which hopefully will give you the roadmap you need.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
You bet.
You know, I think the, you know, this is like 15 minutes culmination of like, you know, probably thousands of hours worth of work. And I think everybody who's involved in this really needs to, you know, be credited with all the, all the time they put into it, all the thought they put into it. It was just a really good collaborative process. And, you know, I think also as, you know, there are so many things going on already around this, around developing the center and ideas floating around, things are happening. This is a critical piece of solidifying the change that is going to happen in that area. And so it's really, it's really important that we've gotten to this stage. Without this, without a master plan, there were so many things that we're not able to do, such as seek grants and things of that nature, attract developers. So this is just, it's a great step forward. And on behalf of the council, I really want to just say I appreciate all the hard work and the outcome of this. It's also a living, living document. I think this isn't any photos or schematics that we've seen up there. It isn't necessarily at all what we're going to see in the center, but it just is a starting point to provide some ideas, start people thinking about what the potential is in that area. And it will, I think, incentivize us to start making some technical decisions about zoning, whether we change the middle school area to the Center Business District zoning or we do other things like that. This is going to incentivize us to consider that. We're going to, after approving this, hopefully tonight, we'll begin tackling the next steps after this. So I think it's a great project, a lot of work done, and I really thank everybody's role in that. The council?
If I can, Council President. The master plan's been spoken about and worked on, tried to be implemented for decades back to town meeting. It's everybody, anybody's town meeting remembers that. The council made a decision, you know, a few years ago to hire some consultants to establish an EDCAC. As Council President said, the document is a roadmap. It's got different routes we can take. It's very flexible, but it also gives us some great input on what we're trying to accomplish here. Again, as Council President said, it establishes an opportunity to work with developers and developers knowing what they can accomplish coming in. And it allows us to go forward with the, with the state for grants that are out there. One very important grant, which we're applying for once we adopt this document, so it's an important document to adopt tonight. And again, I want to say thank you to our consultants. They worked hard and I know we were difficult at times, but they remained on top of things and got things done as we needed. And to the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee and to the subcommittee, Heather and Jim, you know, from the council. And the whole council's worked hard. We all have a vision. And to the public, because all the input that you've brought forward was incorporated into this and there was a lot of thoughtfulness, thoughtfulness given to what we're trying to accomplish as a community. And it's bigger than just myself or any one of the councils. It's about what's going to happen to Winthrop and Winthrop's future. And a lot of hard work went into it, so thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Of course I have to say something. But I think one of the things that I want to impress on everyone in the community is that we really do need to back this type of, we need development because we're finding now that, you know, economically to make ends meet, it's difficult. And if, without new tax revenue from, you know, population density, we're not going to be able to do a lot of the things that the community is telling us they'd like to do. So we really need to get the whole community behind supporting this wholeheartedly and making, you know, making this happen sooner than later. And I know sometimes development is a four-letter word in the town and we need to kind of change that a little bit. If, if we want to do the things, you know, to be able to pay for some of the things that people would like to do in the town, we need to really wholeheartedly encourage that. That's it.
Thank you.
And just one more thing. And thank you to the chamber too. They've been quite, you know, helpful along the whole process, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there have been so many groups involved in this. Don Sullivan here for the school committee. We have all of the committees involved, the transportation committee, Chamber of Commerce. So we had, this was a town-wide initiative and the outcome reflects that. So are there any other comments? Kevin?
I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Councilor Yashy said in that, you know, really the purpose and the goal behind having a master plan like this is economic development and increasing our tax base. And when we look at wanting to spend more money on the schools and have more flexibility in our schools, to hire teachers, have more programming, when we look at wanting to make improvements to roads and sidewalks and infrastructure across the town, we need to, we need to get more revenue. And this is really sort of a roadmap and a set of great ideas on how we might do that. And thank you for everybody, to the consultants and the EDCAC and the town manager's office for all of the work that's gone into this. I think it's, it's really exciting to see all the pieces come together.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is I want to agree with Councilor Sanford, those of us who've been around for a while, the master plan is long overdue. It's something we've talked about, you know, I guess we're probably close to 20 years. And I also want to reiterate what you said, Mr. President, that is, it's a living document. You may not agree with every aspect of it. You may not, you know, like the street width or something like that or a concept right now. It's evolving. What we need, I'm not going to say development, but I'm going to say refurbishment. That section of town needs to be refurbished. And the only way to really revitalize the town is to refurbish it and get it moving somehow. So even if pieces of it come together, you know, I'm very proud that we're finally getting a piece of a master plan in place.
Councilor Boncorrie?
Just in addition to all the committees who did so much great work, there were public hearings that were held at the senior center two or three times. And each time there was 30 to 50 people that put their input in and that input is put into this. And it's important that we do pass this today because this is the key step that we need to get any funding from Mass Works. And I know there's been conversations with Jay Ash and he's looking to see a lot of development if he's going to give us some money.
You have a comment?
No idea, but everyone said.
I'm going to open it up to the public. This is a public hearing, so if there are any folks from the public who wish to say anything regarding this matter, please speak up. Julia?
Julia.
Julia?
Yeah, Julia Wallace with the Transportation Committee. We didn't submit anything in writing, so I just wanted to put on the record how supportive we are of this master plan. So excited to see the evolution and I think it's come a long way from the last draft that I reviewed. And also the serendipity of the timing with the new bus contract and drastically improved transportation access and mobility in this town and linking that with this new development. The timing couldn't be better. And then add to that the complete streets policy that was just passed, I think the stars are aligning for Winthrop. And then with this master plan in place and getting a fusion of revenue, fix our infrastructure to build up and get the tax base that we need, we're going in the right direction. So we commend you for all the work you've done and hope that we can pass this plan and move forward.
Thank you. Pam?
Dean Spence, Precinct Two, Chairman of the Town Winthrop's Planning Board. I wholeheartedly support the master plan. I'm very excited about it. I can pledge that the planning board will work as diligently as possible with the town council to implement some of these zoning changes that will be necessary to complete the master plan. And I think 100% of my board feels the same way, so we're all excited about the master plan.
Good, good to hear. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Carroll?
Hi, I'm Bob Carroll with the Chairman of the EDCAC. It was a pleasure working on this document. I think it was very important for the town, as has been said multiple times here. I've learned a lot from the group that was put together and the names on that document that helped to do it for from the outside, internally as well and the group. It is, it is a great forward-looking document. Again, not perfect and a living document will never be perfect. That's the point. It just points us in a direction and gets us all on the same page about how to get somewhere. It is flexible, which I think is important too, and there's multiple places to kind of push and pull and improve. What I think is also important to say, this is step one, which is the ideas. It's not the, not to say that that's the easiest part, but now comes the hard part where we actually implement the stuff. So we have to kind of stay vigilant. We have to have a transparent process moving forward and how are we going to implement these things. We're going to continue to have that public input that we discussed earlier. And again, whatever capacity I can help is a continuation of the EDCAC or member of the planning board. I'm happy, I'm happy to help in whatever, whatever capacity we have. But we're very, I'm personally very proud of this document. I know our group worked very hard to get this together and again, couldn't have created anything without the outside help and folks in town hall finding the outside help and wanting the couch cushions to pay for it. So I think that's absolutely great, so.
Good. Thank you, Bob. Are there any other comments? Don Sullivan?
Thank you, Don Sullivan, Precinct Five. I'm excited that we're talking about this. I'm excited that this part of the idea phase is wrapping up. I'm really here tonight because I want to just advocate for action and action that's going to be revenue-producing as a priority for whatever ideas are in this plan to help move Winthrop forward. I think, you know, we all know that we're facing a deficit in our budget this year and I just don't want to be facing the same thing next year and the year after and the year after. So I think this plan has some awesome ideas and I really hope it doesn't take another 20 years to implement them. I think, you know, the planning part shouldn't be, you know, it is what it is, but I hope the action part is really felt to be a priority for the leaders in this town. I think there needs to be some education with the public in terms of perception. I think there's many people who live here that think we're already very densely populated, so to think about more residential density is maybe scary to some people. So I think that the public really should be educated about what that means and what that's going to look like. You know, another easy example is the parking. There's always perception that we don't have enough and this report is saying there's plenty. So those are just the kinds of things that I think a little bit of education goes a long And I just think this is going to possibly change the identity of Winthrop and I love change. I think that's a great thing, but it might take some more public meetings and more invitation of the community to push this forward and really starting with the education piece as to what is going to create what we are creating here in Winthrop. And, you know, I would like for five years from now for us to not be talking about budget deficits and empty buildings and sidewalks and things like that. I would like for us to be talking about a flourishing community that has plenty of money to pay our teachers what they deserve to be paid and to give our students what they deserve to have for programming and our public safety departments and not be sort of, you know, living paycheck to paycheck like we have been. So thanks, everybody, for your input and your work and it's so much appreciated from the school department for sure and also as a citizen. And, you know, I really consider Winthrop my home and love it here and just want to see only good things happen, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing, just on the, on the operational end of this, I want to actually echo what Don said. This isn't a time to, we've come to this point, this is great progress, but we've got to make decisions fairly quickly. We've already kind of threw the light switch on, on the utility work down the center, which is a huge step. We've got the gas company in there. And then the utility work comes after that with storm drain, water and sewer. We want to be able to move the process, once, once we start opening the roads down there, you want to have an endpoint. So we want to get these decisions made fairly quickly so we're not having the center in a construction zone for the next five years. So I just want to understand that there's, there's a lot of utility work to come. I want everybody to understand what that means and try to get to some, some common grounds on what we want to see for the, for the streetscape so we can move it forward.
That's a good point. That'd be a good point. Steve?
Mr. Freedom? President, Precinct One, floor, everybody. I'm just curious as to, we just got the document, the 250-page document this evening. Has that been available to the community?
It's been available for about two, two weeks, two weeks.
23rd.
Is there any period of, so the public could maybe get a hold of it, read it, think about it and act on it? Because I kind of just found out about this last Wednesday, so.
It's kind of been going on for like a year.
No, I know. I've been to some of the meetings, but some of them were scheduled for in the afternoon, some other times, so.
Yeah, I hope, there's a real, there's a real need.
I know there's a necessity of time, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the way I look at it, there's been a lot of input from the public already in all, almost everything that the public, we read through this document, everything that came up at these visioning sessions are listed, whether it's an action item or whether it's in the appendix that somebody brought this up. There's, and again, this isn't, this isn't what we're doing.
I realize that.
But I think that it's important for us, it's really important for us to move forward in this as quickly as we possibly can. Because, you know, we've been at it for a while and there's also things pending that if we don't take action as soon as we possibly can, some of those opportunities may go away. And so I think, I'm compelled to say, we, I'm going to ask the council to broaden this tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Betsy?
Betsy Shane, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say thank you to all of you. We were at, I was at almost all of those meetings. I think the other thing that's important, going back to both what Don and Steve were saying, is maybe us getting better at some of the communication because all those meetings were public meetings. So anybody could have been at any of those at any point. We felt, as a representative of the business community, it was important to be at all of them and be involved. I think it's a great document. I think it's really important that it's a living document and that we have the opportunity to, as Bob said, I think, let some ebb and flow go with it. But also as a number of people said here tonight, Steve and Bob, I think what's also really important is that we keep moving forward so that we don't just say, you know, somebody says it's great that you passed a master plan, but nothing's happened. There's going to be some... There's going to be some struggles still going ahead. Think in regards to communication, you know, the fact that the National Grid's doing this work now, we've got hopefully the infrastructure work coming right behind that. We're working really hard with Steve and EBW and Town Hall and the local businesses so that if they can't get to meetings, we're trying to get to them so that they know what's going on and there'll be hopefully better communication and transparency. But I think it's a great document and we look forward to helping to support it and move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Just one quick addition. You know, the first Thursday of every month, we have, we hold a meeting, a public meeting relative to the Center Business District, which will be held on, on the sixth. So we try to give you some input and make sure that everybody's on board and realize as we go forward with this, with this project, what's coming up. So that's, that's something we're trying to continue with education of the public and as well as the website and channel and WCAT.
So the sixth is this Thursday at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at EBU. I mean, that happens the first Thursday every, every month.
Yeah.
And so we're going to continue doing that as a way to try to keep people apprised of what's happening in the Center Business District. Council, we ask you.
There is more of a question. With the Citizens Advisory Committee, is that a, that was a finite committee, a finite period of time? I didn't know if we needed to extend that to ask for their ongoing participation. I don't know if it, if there was an end date, I guess, to it.
I think that's, my own take is that that's something we should discuss. We've talked a little bit in meetings about what the continuing role will be. I'm not sure that tonight is tonight.
Nope, I just want to make sure.
Certainly, we, you know, so appreciate all the work that the group did and I think we've heard from the group that there's an interest in continuing to help in whatever way they can. So we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about that in, in the very near future, I think. Any other thoughts, questions before I close the public hearing? And we'll be voting on this a little bit later in the meeting. And so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public comments. Is there anything else anyone else wants to speak about this evening? Public comment? Seeing none? I have no, I don't have any correspondents to report on. I have some that I'm working on with some of the town officials, some town manager, but I won't, I'm not going to bring them up here. Committee reports. Millerfield Committee, Council of the.
Millerfield met last week and not a lot new there. We signed our contract with the ECM and you'll start to see some work being done Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, well, not Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but Friday and Monday, wrapping up Tuesday, we'll have GeoSearch, which is a drilling subcontractor and they'll be there doing some, what do they call them? Soil pre-characterizations, whatever that might be. But they'll be there drilling holes. We're asking the schools to make sure any equipment that's there is out. We're still looking for the third week in April for demolition, so everything is going all right there. I have had questions on Ingleside. People seem to think that it's kind of quieter down there and it's just the weather, the wetness, the rain. That's still scheduled to be completed by the end of May as we had hoped. Everything else is going along very well. We're still anticipating opening the field for the Thanksgiving Day football game.
Great. Thank you. Town Manager's report.
Yeah, good evening. I do feel like we've crossed, you know, the Rubicon on this whole thing, on this master planning. I want to thank all of you for your commitment to this lengthy but important process and it's been really enjoyable. Always is, you know, you learn new things. You learn how people feel and what they want, what their dreams are, what they, they hope and their aspirations are for this community. And it's really great for us as your administration to hear those things and understand what those are. Because those are the things that guide us and give us enthusiasm in terms of what we're doing. So it's been a very healthy process to go through. Certainly, it's great having professionals on the team to help with that and having good, you know, leadership from the EDCAC monitoring that and guiding that process. It's been, really, it's been a joy for us to participate in. On behalf of Joe and my office, you know, thank you all for allowing us to contribute and participate in that effort. I'm just thrilled tonight that we've passed this, this point. We've been toiling in the fields this past few weeks, particularly in the numbers field. So we've been tasked with submitting a draft of what would be the first round from the manager's office in terms of funding for FY 2018 budget proposal. So Mike and I have been working at that and we'll be working more at that every day until the eleventh, when we'll submit a first round, rough draft, if you will. So that's, that's been a major undertaking right now and all that goes with it. I'm just thrilled with the success that the schools have seen this past week in drama and in their music. State champs in drama. Isn't that something? That's really amazing.
That's awesome.
It really is. Please take that message back.
They will be recognized on that.
And then just to note, when I started here in town in 2009, there was no music at all in these departments and schools to speak of. To get two silver, silver statewide medals in music is quite an amazing accomplishment. So music's back and important for the town and I'm just thrilled with that success. I wanted to ask the police chief to just give a quick overview of some initial thinking to advise the council on how the conversations with Seal Boston have been going and some logistical things that are contemplated. Chief, can you just address some of those issues?
Thank you. We've been meeting with the state police, the environmental police, the coast guard, along myself, Chief Flanagan and the Hutter Masters, trying to coordinate and seeing what the expectations are here in Winthrop for the June seventeenth Seal Boston event. Boston is focused on Boston. Most of the money off Seal Boston is going strictly to Boston, leaving outskirts and agencies on their own. The state police is working with us for a deployment plan for Deer Island. Initially, they do not want any parking on the island, so that's going to leave us a traffic problem in Winthrop and Point Shirley area. So we are, through the manager's office, contemplating stickers for the Point Shirley residents, for Seal Boston stickers, to allow them to free flow in and out of the Point Shirley area and go into a more of a July, third of July, fourth of deployment plan locally on the side streets and blocking off the traffic once we start to see the impacts. If it's a nice day, we have Yorick to deal with. The landing's going to be full, there's not going to be any parking available there. We have the Yor Club to deal with to get their members in and out as well. So we encourage people to take public transportation, to walk if they're going to view it in Winthrop. The impact's going to depend on how much publicity we get and the Boston press and the magazines and where they're recommending. We locally know that from the LNG takeup, you can almost throw a rock and anything comes through and goes into Boston Harbor from Deer Island. So there's going to be, you know, we have to anticipate the worst, expect the worst, have a plan in place and implement it on the day if we need it. And if we don't, then we just leave those streets wide open and we want other traffic and from there. But I think at the very least, you'll see a roadblock at Elliott blocking the traffic for even going down Deer Island so they don't start parking on the side streets leading up and pass out. And then we start towing a hundred, two hundred cars and everyone's planning out since actually the state police's decision, not the Winthrop police's decision. We'll coordinate on deployment and be happy to go into executive session when and if you feel it appropriate to talk about the more specific following up and deployment for police personnel.
Thank you, Chief. What this has suggested to my staff is a wonderful opportunity for Winthrop. We've discussed an idea of having some kind of signature event for the town. Many communities have an event for their communities. In Gloucester, you might be familiar with the St. Peter's Fiesta. You might have visited the North End and seen a number of fiestas that take place there. Melrose has a Victorian Day Fiesta, if you will. And it's worth contemplating for Winthrop, an identifiable signature day of celebration and what that would involve. And so, you know, we're seeing ourselves planning for an event that involves Winthrop and the ocean, the sea, and our proximity to it and why, why it's such a critical feature of our community. But it also conjures up an idea that's been somewhat talked about, but we'd like to have more explored fully, an idea of a signature event for Winthrop. And, you know, it would be a shame if, if our efforts and deployment of all resources come to nothing because some other community decided not to promote this event to an extent that, you know, we don't have anything that happens here, but yet we have deployment and expense as a result. And so we're thinking about an idea of how we can leverage this opportunity to showcase the town, to bring our creative juices to the table and think, and thankfully, you've appointed a committee, a Seal Boston committee, to do that. But we're encouraging even more of a vision going forward of using that kind of a committee to think about how we would have an annual event for Winthrop and to celebrate Winthrop and to think about how we would have a signature, you know, day such as what has, what some other communities do. Revere has their sandcastles and other, yeah. What would Winthrop do? And so we invite that kind of thinking and hopefully we encourage, you know, an idea at least to consider how we would, how we would do something for Winthrop. So I leave you with that thought. We are eager to swear in our new deputy chief, John Goodman, on, Goodman, on April twelfth at six P.M. I certainly would invite any other members of the council who wish to, although we have to post it if you all come.
What did?
April twelfth, right?
April twelfth, six P.M.
Here.
Where, station or here?
Here.
Here.
Here, yeah. And I'd ask Steve Cowell, he sort of touched on a few issues already, so he sort of already talked about it, but tell us how it's going down in the center. I want people to know where we are and what, how we're progressing.
Sure. So National Grid mobilized March twenty-seventh. They've actually done the majority of the, of the gas work on Woodside Avenue, which the area of CBS, just past the Credit Union. Traffic flows have been, they've been able to maintain the land traffic as promised. I guess I can actually, any complaints to the, to the police department? I think traffic has actually been moving down there pretty well.
Yeah, we've been wanting to get for my office, ensuring that the tail offices keep that flow open and as much as possible to coordinate with the business district down there. There might be some points that we would have to close Woodside at the entrance while they make connections, but we're trying to keep them down to limited times. And then of course, we'll be going down Somerset and Woodside and those streets eventually.
Right. So right now, there's, there's two crews mobilized, the one that's working on Woodside Ave. And once they have the main, then they'll start making their service connections. The second crew is up on Pleasant Street and there's gas main replacement from Sargent Street down to Sunnyside to bring more volume into the center for their upgrades and their utility. And then as the chief alluded to, there will be additional work on Batlett Cottage Park and Somerset. Again, they promised at all times to keep the land traffic open and, you know, and if they do have to make their crossings, which they will have to do street crossings for services, they will, they'll be, you know, short closings and they'll always maintain access to the businesses and to the homes. The gas company has probably three months' worth of work down there, maybe even a little bit longer depending on, on weather. But, and once they're done, that's when we need to discuss our strategy to come in and start our water, sewer and, and storm drain. That construction will be a little bit more intense than, than the gas as we're a lot deeper and, you know, we're dealing with three utilities as opposed to one. We've made progress with the electric company. They've started engineering the feasibility to put the, what little overhead wiring we have on Woodside Ave underground to get rid of those, those little overhead, the ugly overhead wires and those three telephone poles. There will be an expense to the town. National Grid Electric doesn't do anything for free. They're working on a cost estimate for that, which I will present to you as soon as I know. But it is in the engineering phase. That's all I have to go on right now.
Thank you.
I thought that's a follow-up question. We've talked in the past about doing a peer review on engineering work, the design work for this. Has that, have we looked into that at all or where does that stand?
We are, we did discuss.
I didn't hear a question.
Peer review of our engineering.
At this point, there hasn't been peer review on it. The engineering is still in the process of being finalized.
Okay.
So once we get, you know, a full set of construction drawings, it would be essentially bid ready. I think that's the time to bring in if you want to do the peer review, which is definitely accepted.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, we talked about that. Economic Development Committee had talked about going, kind of a.
For a project of this magnitude, I think it's important.
It would be good.
To do it.
Might help us in the long run.
When the time is, when the time is right.
Yeah. So we should, should think about how to incorporate that, I think, into the process.
And finally, April showers. It's very wet outside and we're seeing a lot of drainage issues around town. And they're certainly a challenge for all of us. We've gotten a lot of concerns and comments from the public about certain areas of town. I'd ask Steve to give us a little bit of sense of, of, you know, the critical areas of town and how we're doing and how our performance is doing relative to handling the storm and the drainage.
As we all know, all of the outfalls in the town, just due to our elevation dictated by the tide cycle. If the tide is up, they, they don't discharge. So we made huge improvements down the point and that project has been working very well. And what we were able to do down there is the installation of tide gates and enlarge our capacity and it's working well. On outfall pipes that don't have tide gates and then the capacity to hold the water, that's what you're seeing. And when you get inches of rain, which we've had in the past few days, I mean, the system gets surcharged and puddling occurs. And then the majority of homes in this town have some pumps, so that's an additional discharge to the streets and the, and the infrastructure. When the tide goes out and the rain receives, the water evacuates. So the system's working, it's just, you know, just the nature of the town of Winthrop. Yeah. Nothing new, it's, nothing, I'd say, broken, but certainly in need of upgrades and updates and that's what we continue to see with our construction improvements.
Is the tide gate working most like?
The tide gate works. It's not automated yet, so we're still manually opening. And it will be fully automated hopefully in the next couple of months. There's still some electrical work that needs to be done and the shed will be replaced over there. The tide gates are both installed, they're working manually. That said, I want to remind everybody that the DEP permits are requiring us to operate this, this gate, this lake, much differently than we have in the past. In the, in the past, I've been able to open this and essentially bring that level down to whatever I want. Once this goes fully automated, every tide cycle is going to be allowed to inundate the lake and then, and then kneel the lake. They're going to require us to keep that lake about a foot and a half higher than what you normally see. So there's going to be some challenges and it's going to have some effects. I can't stand here today and tell you what the extent of those effects are going to be. And there may be an appeal process if, if things just simply don't work and we may be able to try to go back and, and, and open up a conversation, but this is the federal and state agencies dictating what. state agencies dictating a wetlands environment. And we're kind of, for me to manually override that automation, once it does fully go automated, will be a, a, a big procedure and it will be scrutinized as to why.
Can we lower it now before it gets automated?
It's going to be lowered every, every low tide cycle. We can only let it out during low tide cycles. And as you get inches of rain, that lake fills up quick. We understand a third of the town is draining to that point, so that's what you're seeing now.
Any, are there any questions for the town manager? No, I, dude, I think there's so much going on and I have the advantage of meeting with you every week and we go through a lot of the things on the table. I think if there are things that any councilman wants to have discussed at these meetings, definitely let me or town manager McKenna know about that. That way, we can make sure we're covering things that people have an interest out of questions on. I know that, I benefit from reading this report. I would benefit more if I saw it actually before the meeting, just so we can, you know, we can kind of look at it. And sometimes this raises some questions of all important things going on. So if we could ever get to this before the meeting, that would be really helpful. Yeah. Part of the package. That'd be great. Yeah. Counselor Cowler?
I was wondering if the chief would be able to just discuss, you know, just mention to you briefly that we want to have some type of a national night out.
Yes.
And so the general public can know it's open.
Can't call it national night out, but that's in August, the second Tuesday of August. But certainly, we thought it was fitting to have a springtime community night out here on April 25th from, 4 to 7.
Forty-seven.
So we have the State Police, the Environmental Police committed, the Sheriff's Department's committed, the Fire Department, Mass Fire, the Smokehouse for the kids, face painting, clowns, hammers, hot dogs from the meat market, there's a hook in the back of the meat market, there's a hook on, so it'll be a great time.
What's the date of this?
April 25th.
April 25th, 4 to 7, here at Metcalf Square. We thought it would be fitting that we have this and also honor Lieutenant Frank Skowbruck for his 40 years of service in the Winthrop Police Department and who is also the originator of National Night Out. So during that time, we're also going to take time to recognize Lieutenant Skowbruck.
That's great.
And I would ask the council to please participate by citation and.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor McCord?
To Jim, you got something in this report about the new housing law, you got a couple minute page doing and stuff. How is that going to affect us?
Well, we actually asked for some opinion from Counselor Riley, Attorney Riley, to apply on that. And he'll, he'll come out with some comment on that in the next week or so. So, that's still in development.
Is it going to change the election process and the number of people that get elected to those?
You know, I don't think so.
That's our preliminary reaction.
But he's making an official opinion on that and I'll get it out to the council when we receive it.
Any other questions for the town manager? Okay. Having none, I'll jump to the school department update. I did not attend the school department meeting, but I spoke.
She's left.
But I was going to call on Dawn to give that update. I did actually speak with her and some of the other members of the committee and just a bit in addition to the normal business of the school committee was the budget vote which occurred. And so, I think everybody's, is everybody aware of that? The school committee voted on a budget that represents, I think, a 5.6% increase, a million, 1.2 million dollars or something like that. That was the vote of the school committee to put forth to the town manager. Now, it's the town manager's job to figure out how to make that happen or not. And I know you're working feverishly on that and we'll just have to see how that all plays out given the brutality of the budget. But, the other thing going on obviously is the search for the superintendent and the school department. The school committee has decided to pursue an interim, an interim superintendent position as a first step because John Vocera will be leaving in July and this process will take some time. So, the school committee is going to go about that process. People can apply internally, externally for that interim position. And then, in addition to that, after this is all settled, I think the school committee, well, I know the school committee is going to create a committee, you know, many different folks from the community, from different organizations, to begin the process of finding a new superintendent on a permanent basis. And so, that's, that's all in play right now. There's a consultant from, I forget the organization, Glenn Kucha, Kucha. He's, there's been some meetings with him to talk about ideas and formats and questions for candidates and how do you go about this whole thing. So that, that's just started and so, the interim selection will happen relatively soon, I think, and then we'll begin the process of searching for a permanent superintendent. And that's all I know. I was away, so. I'll be there next Monday. I'll catch up. Under old business, there are no items. And under new business, there are several items. The first item that I, we're all excited to be voting about on this, and this is a simple motion. This is a motion to move that the town council vote to accept the Senate Business District master plan or take any other action there to. Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Great. The next item is, the next several items are appropriation, money transfer. And I'm going to read the motions and I think most of them are going to be referred to finance. And, first motion is to move that the town council transfer $41,256 from Capital Stabilization Fund 964 to the General Fund Special Article to fund the pickup truck for school custodial services or take any other action there too.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The second motion is to move that the town council transfer $33,900 from the Ferry Vessel Grant Fund, number 537, to the General Fund, number 010990-497000, to repay the General Fund, the amount voted 67, on 6716, to fund the fiscal year 2016 deficit in this fund or take any other action there too.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Third item is to move that the town council transfer $22,000 from the Rink Contained Earnings Fund 672 to Budget Line Number 67267255-578100, Rink Reserve Fund, Pen Creation Rink, to fund the balance of the budget for the remainder of the fiscal year 2017 or take any other action there too.
Motion to refer.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Fourth item is, is to move that the town council transfer $8,000 from the Town Council Reserve, number 1's, excuse me, number 0111057-578100, to replenish Special Fund, Special Article rather, 0196052-588057, fiscal year 14 receivership, derelict property in the General Fund or take any other action there too.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer. Second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And the last, last motion on funding appropriations is to move that the town council transfer $5,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund, number 964, to a new special article in the General Fund on the purpose of installing a coolant leak detection system in the last Rink to bring the system into compliance with insurance requirements or take any other action there too.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. That's all of our new business. Second, public comment section? Anyone? Betsy Shane?
Yeah, Betsy Shane. Just a quick question, is there an update on what DCR is doing on Shore Drive on the beach?
Yes, we will get.
A lot of trucks and stuff on it.
Yes, yes. They are, in fact, very carefully monitoring the coastline. And in fact, they've been doing some grooming and some, you know, what they can do under the conditions of the weather, of course. They want to make sure that, they're preparing for the birds, to be quite honest with you. They, they want to make sure that that's somewhat of a contained situation this year and not sort of just let, you know, grow wherever it takes it over the, over the next few months. And so, they're preparing a place for, for our friends, the.
Plowards.
The plowards. In a way that, that's, it's sensitive to their needs and that's what you see there.
I have a follow-up question with that department. I noticed there were some, on Shore Drive here, I think it was its Cutler, there was some heavy equipment there following one of the recent storms and there's a whole bunch of big gouges out of the seawall, right along the sidewalk. The seawall actually looked pretty good and then it was all painted and everything, big gouges out of it following the work of it.
I don't know anything about that.
That may have been where they created egress for those machines, but I have to look into it.
It looks pretty lousy.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'll, I'll let them.
Thank you.
We may be due for a visit FMM.
Yeah.
To the community and where they're at, because there's so much going on with respect to renovations and sidewalks and lights and all of that, so all we know is power back.
Yeah, I mean, there were the big, the big heavy equipment was parked there and it looked like they were taking sand off the sidewalk or something like that.
Right, right. I'll see what I can do to have them update us.
Okay, that'd be good. Any other, you do public comment, public relations, at our next meeting on the 18th of April, we're going to have the spring forum and that'll be, the focus of that will be on the fiscal year 18 budget. So, we'll have a presentation regarding that. Street sweeping is going to begin, so it's a true sign of spring, April 24th. It's done on the trash day. There are a number of events, as we saw at the spring, there were so many events going on. One of them is fundraiser for this organization, they've been here before, I mean, this is called Those Who Can't For Those In Need, and they're inviting everybody to be part of their fourth annual Uplift Yourself With Laughter fundraiser. It's April 22nd, it's Saturday at the Beachmont BFW, there's going to be comedians there and they're going to be presenting awards. So that's April 22nd, 2017 for that organization. There's Public Health Awareness Week and the Winthrop Public Health Department and Medical Services Corporation, Corporation, Corp., which is so instrumental in the recent fires that we had, particularly over Governor's Park. They're having an event on Saturday, April 18th, from 11 to 1, so people could be invited to that. And the chief has an event going on. Do you want me to mention this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just read the email, I thought it was worthy of mentioning. There's something called the Civilian Police Academy. Do you want to talk about that at all? Do you want me to?
Sure, you get the dates though. I'll ask you to read those dates. Sergeant Rogers has organized another civilian police academy. We'd like to get around 12, 13 people, I think he has about 10 right now. So there's certainly some openings and each week there'll be a different subject. I'm an expert in the talk to the citizens about that and one of the nights, we can do, we're going to do a community policing night, which is April 25th. Right here in the, the John Harbor Community Policing operates. So, I think there's a ride along in the police cruiser with that, with this, with the signed waivers. They see how the officers operate on the street and stuff like that.
Yeah, sounds like a great.
So it's a great, a great event, a great way for the citizens to understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to get a transcript this week as well. Not to put pressure on you.
Beginning Tuesday, the 18th, and continuing for 10 weeks. So that's, that's a great program, so I thought I'd mention that.
Thank you.
And, yeah. Counselor McCord?
The spring forum, I think we should announce, will be at the Senior Center rather than the mayor's.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll do the spring forum at the Senior Center. And I have spoken with Denise about making sure we publish, publish that in the paper. And, go ahead.
Yeah. Just a quick one, to let you know that, in case, I think you all know, but to let the public know, there's a Coastal Infrastructure Vulnerability Hearing, or public meeting tomorrow night. As you know, several months ago, we got a grant from Coastal Zone Management, which your council graciously helped fund. And our engineers, Stantec, have been meeting with the Public Safety Department heads and other key stakeholders on the conservation commission in town. They'll be vetting some of that information with the public tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the EB New Center.
Okay.
And that's kind of one of two phases of public forums to help make sure that they're doing their due diligence and getting all the information they can about our vulnerability to the coast.
Good, that should be interesting. Yeah, good. Are there any other public events? Anyone who's aware that you wanted?
There's one, I'm getting a text right now from Winthrop Hockey Thursday night at JW's. It's a yearly fundraiser. They'll have raffles and cash bar, appetizers free. So that's this Thursday, I'm not sure of the time, at JW's for Winthrop Hockey.
Good. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leading adjourned.